Call to order, Brainerd City Council. It is Tuesday, September 2nd, 7:30 PM, council chambers. Tony, please call the roll.
Johnson?
Here.
Stunek? Jaeger?
Yes.
Erickson?
Here.
Bevins?
Here.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Here.
Baddow?
Here. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tony, let the record know that Stunek has arrived. Next, we have approval of the agenda.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Chesak, second by Jaeger. Was there a...
We're gonna leave it.
Leave it, okay. And any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. We have an agenda. Next, we have the consent calendar. This is a notice to public that all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Bevins, second by Stunek. Any discussion? Tony?
Johnson?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes. Moving on to number six. This is a public forum. This is time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. Time limits may be imposed. So if there's anybody that wants to address the council on something not on the agenda, please come forward now. And if you're online and you'd like to address the council, press star three. Say again, if there's anybody who would like to address the council, please come forward And we will close the public forum at 7:33. Next, we're moving on to number seven. This is council committee reports. First up, we have Personnel and Finance Committee Chairman Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have six items on our agenda tonight, the first of which is to accept 2026 long-term disability and ancillary benefits proposals. The motion is to accept the long-term disability insurance proposal from Madison National and to accept MetLife Dental Accident, Critical Illness and Hospital Plan, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Johnson?
Overall, it looks like this will save us and the HRA a combined $1,676 a year, so that's nice.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Chairman Johnson.
Thank you. Next up is a change order on the library project. And the motion is to approve the change order for an additional $1,650.50, making the complete HVAC change order request totaling $83.85 and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Chairman Johnson.
If you remember, last year, we increased the library levy by 2%, but we also, in addition to that, put $400,000 into our budget to put a new HVAC and some exterior work on the library. Didn't have to, just did it for the library. And they had this one change order here that they wanted to fix, that they had an HVAC system with some humidity problems. They have two furnaces, they weren't communicating properly. This change order should tie the two systems together and solve their humidity problem over at the airport. So HVAC recommended it, and we're hoping everybody supports the library here.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Chairman Johnson.
Okay, next up is a resolution, Mike.
Okay, I'll try to remember that.
Yep. And the motion is to adopt the attached resolution relating to finance transferring certain funds to and from bond funds, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Johnson?
So we have a couple bond funds that are closed out. One is $12,088.9 in the plus, and one is $2,871 in the negative, so it's a net positive balance of $10,027. And this resolution just transfers it from the individual bond fund accounts into the Fund 400, which is just our sinking general debt fund.
Thank you. More discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, Tony, please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes. That is carried. Chairman Johnson.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. This room, we had some discussion downstairs, and we... This is the HRA 2026 levy request. We weren't quite sure what to do. The former liaison had a lot of opinions about the HRA levy in years past, but we have a new liaison this year. So we were kind of hoping Kevin Jaeger could make a motion and guide us through why this is the correct choice for us to make for the HR this year, HRA this year, if Kevin's willing.
Certainly would like to. I will... So what I would say is, is that we had a fairly robust discussion at our last HRA meeting regarding this. A big driver in the numbers was as what many of our budgets are this year, it's the human resource aspect of this. We unfortunately lost staff last year. We obviously don't know that that's a connection here, but we are always seeking, as one of our primary initiatives, a goals that was set forth, that was set forth with our commission or with the HRA, is to maintain a happy, healthy staff and to keep the staff that we have. We feel that a big factor in that is being competitive in the local arena for jobs with those people. So that was a big, big part of our conversation regarding this, this year's budget ask, and for that reason, I think that the HRA Commission was unanimous in pushing this forward and certainly with a lot of input from our director as well, gained support from the board. So, and that's why we are pushing for this number to be approved this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jaeger. Any more discussion?
Can I ask, based on what I heard there, did you... Okay?
Yeah, please.
You said it was for HR?
A.
HRA.
Okay, I thought I... So this is... Is this for the increased salary? Is that what you're speaking?
Well, I'm saying that was a factor in the budget request.
Yeah, I didn't hear you specifically say that. So this is what, the main factor for the budget request increases?
I would say it's a contributing factor, and perhaps Mr. Sharpentier can weigh in on this as well, but that's absolutely one of the drivers in the budget request. Mr. Sharpentier, please.
Yes, thank you, council. And to that point, Councilman Chesak, certainly wage and benefit is something that we continue to battle with as we look at our peer and our peer groups. The last two budget cycles, we've really been trying to get back to a level playing ground with, again, some of our peers out there for our wage and benefit. We've seen significant increases the last couple of years as far as what our discrepancy has been with the proposed budget, and those increases will shrink what was a 16% roughly budget gap between peer down to hopefully about 10%. We're not doing this in one fell swoop. We are trying to be mindful from a staffing perspective and from a board perspective of taking bites of that to get back to kind of peer level. As Councilman Jaeger stated, we have had some turnover. We've had some feedback from those that have left that we're not able to take the position or for hiring and/or reasons for leaving with other similarly situated jobs. Was it the state of Minnesota? We know we're not going to compete with the state of Minnesota, but it was not close. So that is a driver, certainly, you know, all of the other ancillary costs that are continuing to go up, those hit us as well. And so as our levy has continued to stay level year to year, we are seeing that we, you know, are seeing a larger gap in our expenses. That is also another reason for why we're requesting our full levy and projects. We know we want to continue to try to do housing projects within the city. That does take some funding, and our board does work with a pretty small budget to try to get some housing pushed through.
Okay, may I?
Yes, Mr. Chesak.
So I heard Chairman Johnson actually, I think, make... Asked Mr. Jaeger to make the motion to approve this.
I absolutely asked him to make a motion on the budget, yes.
Okay, and I didn't hear a motion, but is there no motion coming out of committee then?
Committee had no motion. We wanted to hear from Kevin. We didn't have a motion.
That clears it up. Thank you.
Thank you, mister.
Yes.
Eric, just one question. The other income, it looks like in revenues, dropped by $82,700.
Yep.
Pretty significant. Could you explain that one?
Yeah, so that line item particularly is for Minnesota Housing Finance Agency. We do rehab work through their program. That is a reflection of eight projects that we had budgeted for this year, down to six, and we base that off of our rehab director and what they think realistically we can do. And so that is that reflection. You'll see that down in the expenditures as well. That did decrease as well, in kind.
Okay, is that from now going forward? Is that looking?
It's year to year. You know, we made a pretty significant jump this year in what we thought we could do. You know, I think we're gonna hit... We've done two so far. We've got three in process, so we're at five. We had budgeted eight. But on the revenue and the expenditure side, those really are almost a wash. So the project amount, while it does look significant, and I agree with that, on line item, at the end of the day, doesn't move that budget.
So that's where, in expenditures, where it's contract costs?
Correct.
Where that actually has gone down almost as much?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bevins?
Just looking at this, it's a 31% tax levy difference with a 12% in salaries. That seems a little like a large difference. I know what I heard at the city's budget workshop on a 12% levy increase. I couldn't imagine we'd probably still be here talking about a 31% increase. That seems a little high. The other thing that came out of last year's budget discussion was, and we can't see this because we don't have a balance sheet, is how much cash does the HRA have? I mean, if they're levying to preserve capital, cash, I would like to ask, Eric, if that's still the case, are they still sitting on a lot of cash at the HRA? And maybe my recollection is wrong, but I'd like to know how much reserves.
Mr. Sharpentier?
Well, we have to use our reserves to balance the budget as a city, so...
You bet. So historically, our reserves sit at eight months, especially on the general fund, due to funding timelines. So when we get our levy, we get that in typically in July, so kind of our board recommendation is eight to 10 months, and we are sitting right at eight months for that reserve.
What's the dollar amount? Is that like $100,000?
I don't have that off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chesak?
I would move the table to the 15th so we can get more information.
Okay. We have a motion by Chesak. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Chesak, second by Erickson. Any discussion?
Just only discuss the date.
What's that?
Can only discuss the date. Time and date, you can't discuss the issue.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I suggest the 16th, the 15th at 7:30.
Thank you. Is that what you've mounted in your motion?
15th, yeah, the city council meetings.
Thank you. Let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign.
Aye.
That motion carries, six to one. Chairman Johnson.
Okay, next up is the library levy request. And the motion out of committee, it was a split motion, but I'll make it anyway. The motion is to set the 2026 levy at $155,840 and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Chairman?
So it's an increase of $3,056. It's another 2% increase. It's not an unfair request, but I think it's an offensive request after they took out radio ads against us last year. Last year, we increased their budget 2% and gave them an additional $400,000 on top of it, and then they took out radio ads saying they've never received an increase in funding. I understand they were trying to target the county and waste their money taking ads about the county, but whoever wrote the script didn't specify county. They said the library has not received an increase in funding, and if the library board and the friends of the library want to treat the city of Brainerd like that and take out radio ads against us, I don't think we should be increasing their budget. That's the only reason I voted, no. It's not a financially unreasonable request.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Mr. Bevins?
And quote Gabe not two minutes ago, we hope everybody supports the library. I understand that there was some... Oh, am I not on? Thank you, Mr. Chair. I understand that there was some concern over those radio ads, but they were... They really were targeted to the county, and it's our library, they do a lot of good things. They have an increase with kitsugami that they have to somehow come up with, as well as the same 12% in payroll that we all are dealing with. So I think the 2% is more than fair.
Thank you, Mr. Bevins. Any more discussion on that?
Mr. President?
Mr. Chesak?
I do agree with Mr. Johnson's concerns. Did we ever learn what the actual cost of that advertising was for the... It was targeted at the county but did not specifically target the county, so it implied that we were not giving any increase?
We're getting some head shakes that we don't have that number.
Don't have that, okay. We couldn't find that though, right?
It's friend... I think it was purchased by friends of the library, which is a private supporting nonprofit, so I don't think even could. We could ask, but I don't think it's a public data.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any more discussion? My question would be, what is our levy for the library compared to the county? Is this another one that we split like the airport?
The county levy is the bare minimum. We levy about 40% more than the bare minimum.
Sounds generous. Any more discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Tony, can you recount that?
Johnson?
No.
Stunek?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Chesak?
No.
O'Day?
No. That motion carries, four three. Chairman Johnson.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Our last item is direction on the pilot contribution from the utility department. And we had a little bit of discussion. We went over all of this data in the packet. We didn't end up with a motion. We did ask staff to come back with some more information and to have Danny and the public utility provide us some more information, just so we have even more robust data to look at before we make a decision, and we'll just visit this again in a couple of weeks.
Okay. So no motion?
No motion.
Ask a question, Mr. President.
Mr. Chesak, go ahead.
Nick, I want to thank you for sending that conversation. I have the finance manager, Danny, from the public utilities, but there's also a, I don't know if you weren't included, spreadsheet. Could we make sure that gets sent out to the council between now and our next meeting? That Danny provided, it shows the revenues and expenses and where the utilities is at. I think the concern that I see is where we're at in revenues and what we have for upcoming projects, capital projects, that if we as a council are going to get more money through the utilities from the pilot, I'd be concerned about that based on the projection that we're seeing. And then also, can somebody explain to me the process of how this has to be approved? Can the council just say, we want more pilot? Does the commission have to approve it? That's one of my questions that I hope we could answer now.
Minister DeBroyle wants to take a shot at that.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna just answer the first half. So the spreadsheet was an oversight on my part, yes, I will get that sound to everybody. And my understanding, and I'm gonna take a stab at this and joke and slap my hand, if the council wants to take some action on the pilot, that can be done via resolution, it can be done via the budget process. To my knowledge, it doesn't have to get approved by the commission. The council has that authority, but there's a variety of ways that they could implement that via resolution, the budgeting process, et cetera. Is that... Joe, do you have anything to add? Sorry, it's not my call.
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
I'm sorry, I don't at this point. I'd have to look into it some more to see what the options are there.
More direction.
Go.
Yes.
We'll get that then through your...
So it's probably a better idea to leave this for a future date, anyway. Is this... Are we planning on two weeks?
Two weeks.
Okay. And more?
Yeah, I have just one more thing regarding that spreadsheet. I don't think... I hope the spreadsheet that gets sent out and that Jeff has reviewed isn't something that's intending to confuse people. Because we're not... We're talking about the pilot program from the electrical revenues of the Electrical Enterprise Fund. We're not talking about the water fund. We're not trying to take any pilot program from the water fund. We're not trying to take any pilot program from the wastewater treatment facility. It's solely focused on the electric fund. So any data that's sent out, if you're including water or wastewater, you're just adding noise that makes no sense to even include. I hope it's not there. I haven't seen it, I don't know.
Thank you, Chairman. Anything else? Chairman Johnson?
End of report.
Second.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to 7B, this is Safety and Public Works Committee. Chairman Tad Erickson.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. We've got three items on our agenda, the first of which is to approve change order number one, improvement 2113 for Beach Oak Ridge Reconstruction Project. The motion coming out of committee is to approve change order number one in the amount of $18,981, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Erickson, second by Chesak. Chairman Erickson?
Yeah, so based on guidance provided by MINDOT, Anderson Brothers is not eligible to perform as a subcontractor on the project. Staff had reached out to Land Rear Construction, who's the general contractor, and asked them to find suitable and acceptable replacement, and they've done that. And that replacement, due to some additional changes and mobilization, there is an additional $6.75 per ton increase, which is the resulting dollar amount that we're recommending approval for.
Thank you. Chairman? Any more discussion?
Question?
Mr. Johnson?
You know how much that $18,000 represents as a percentage increase of the street project? Of just like doing the street of that one subcontractor line?
No.
I don't have that.
Perhaps staff might... The president would allow.
There's another question that will be coming up too, from Councilman Jaeger, and so I'll add, and we'll just form our response, and we'll send it out to the council with that. We'll add that question to our response, Councilman Johnson, and we'll answer that to the whole council.
Thank you.
Thank you. But to your point, it's probably more than a million dollar project.
But how much was to this one subcontractor?
Right. Okay. All right. Any more discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. That motion carries. Chairman Erickson?
All right, thank you. Our second item, approved change order number two, improvement 2313 for Trunk Highway 371 B Willow Street Roundabout Project. Motion coming out of committee is to approve change order number two in the amount of $29,123.12, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Erickson, second by Chesak. Chairman Erickson?
Yeah, just an additional comment on this. So this is a different project, virtually same situation, due to Anderson Brothers not being eligible to perform as a subcontractor. Same thing, staff reached out to Land Rear, and they provided a suitable replacement. Unit price adjustment for this one is $21.32 per ton, resulting in that dollar figure I mentioned, $29,123.12.
Thank you, Chairman. More discussion on that? My question for staff maybe is that the difference in the per ton increase, is that a totally different material? Or what is... What is the big change there?
Yeah, if they could weigh in, but maybe this one was due to the volume size of the project, but please elaborate.
Yes, that is... The roundabout is just the roundabout. Beach is a much larger project, but I'll add that to our response.
Okay, thank you. All right, any more discussion?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Mr. Chesak?
The projects, of course, are the volume is... More volume means you're gonna get a better price, and I think mobilization has a lot to do with it, so as I think Tad indicated. But I just want to say one thing, I think this is a really crappy deal all around for business like Anderson Brothers and everything that's happened. It's too bad. We don't really have a choice here, so if anybody looks at what we're doing as being unfair, it's... Our hands are tied, so...
Agreed. Agreed. All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Chairman Erickson?
All right, the last...
Mr. President? Would you mind asking?
Yeah, I was gonna do that. We had further discussion, not germane to these two contracts, but we had discussion in committee about perhaps reviewing our contracts to see if we can protect, further protect ourselves against such a situation as this. It seems as though, you know, the general contractor is getting out of this situation with really not an increase to cost to them, as well as the subcontractor, that burden as we just approved really falls on the city. And so we had discussion about, you know, it'd be nice to maybe review the language in our contracts to see if we could further protect the city and the taxpayers from these types of situations going forward. Was there other comments that you wanted to add to that, or is that a fair summary or?
Mr. Chesak or Jaeger?
Either of you, yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Erickson, I think that's... Well, that was exactly kind of my question here is, Mr. Langle, is that the city has a contract with a general contractor. If a subcontractor to that general defaults by whatever means, it seems to me that the general contractor should be taking that to case with the sub, not with the contract owner, which is us. So that was just... with the, uh, the, the contract owner, which is us. So, that was just, I was just, I just raised the question regarding the language within our contracts. Maybe it's there, maybe it isn't there. Uh, perhaps Jesse knows that, has something to share on that, but it just seems odd to me, uh, and that was the reason for, uh, the inquiry, uh, to staff. So, perhaps that's something we could look at.
Yeah, we can sort of look at it. It's gonna depend upon two things, the language of the contract, and also this is a state project, so it's gonna depend upon the statutory umbrella under which this contract is done, and whether the rules, under the MINDOT's rules, impact this as well.
Understood.
Great.
Thank you.
And then just our, our last item then.
Yep, go ahead.
Which, um, was the approval of agreement between the city and Wolf Track Energy for Rotary Park, uh, solar project. Um, no action coming out of committee on this one. Um, staff had updated us that they talked with, uh, Wolf Track Energy about their bond, and they were not bonding the full amount. I guess I would just ask that, um, they were gonna, you know, get back with them and get some additional numbers on, kind of revamping that. So, um, I'd maybe, if it's all right with you, Mr. President, call on staff to give a brief explanation of why we're tabling that one.
Mr. Habegorst, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. All right, Mr. President, yes, we are, they only bid the project for a half bond, and as constructed, we, you want to bond the full dollar amount for the project, and so they said that they would have to readjust their numbers, and I, um, indicated, "Well, the numbers are already pre-approved. It's on the agenda for tonight. If you would like to pull it, I can pull it, and then you could resubmit your bid, and it'd have to go back to the commission, park board, and then finally city council."
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, do we, do we need a motion to direct, uh, Attorney Langle to look at the contract, um, at the contracts, or just to button this up, or, okay?
If you guys wanted to make a motion for it, though?
I just didn't know if we gave clear direction to what we wanted on those, so.
Is that clear direction?
I understood there was consensus, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Any more discussion? All right. Chairman Erickson?
Thank you. That'll be the end of the report.
Thank you. Moving on to number eight, this is unfinished business. 8A, we have a call for applicants. First up, we have the Honorable Mayor Bedeau.
Thank you, Council President O'Day. The following, uh, chair, or, excuse me, boards and commissions have seats available. The Charter Commission, two terms expiring 2025, two terms expiring 2026. Library Board, one term expiring 2027. Public Utilities Commission, one term expiring 2028. Transportation Advisor Committee, two terms expiring 2025, one term expiring 2026.
And as council president, I have one term that expires in 2027 for the Planning Commission, and two terms for the Water Tower Committee. Moving on to number nine, this is new business. 9A, we have a consideration for variance request for the placement of a garden shed in the front yard at 722 Mississippi Drive. Is this James Kramback?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Alan and Nancy Elberson have submitted a variance request for the construction of a 12-foot by 18-foot garden shed in the front yard. Uh, this property is located in the Garden Living Zoning District and is a riparian lot located along the Mississippi River. Uh, detached accessory structures are required to be placed behind the principal structure in the GL District. Uh, the property owners are in the process of constructing a new single-family home on this lot along the Mississippi River. According to section 530.09, which is our Shoreland Zoning Code, uh, within the city code, structures are required to be placed 150 feet from the ordinary high-water line in the Mississippi River. A principal structure is located approximately 150 feet from the Mississippi River, which is consistent with most riparian lot construction. A location of the house and the Mississippi River do not allow for the placement of the accessory structure in the year, uh, in the rear yard in this instance. Uh, the construction of this accessory structure will not alter the essential character of the locality. As proposed, materials will be consistent with the primary structure. Um, along with other properties along the Mississippi River in this area do not have rear yard accessory structures as depicted in the latest Crow Wing County, um, GIS imagery. With that, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this variance request as proposed, and I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kramback. Does anybody have questions for staff? Mr. Chesak?
I apologize if it was in the information, but what is the significance of the name Garden Shed as opposed to a shed?
I think that was just placed in the applicant, uh, as, as, in the application, so essentially an accessory structure or shed.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Questions for staff? If not, looks like the Planning Commission voted-
Motion to approve the Planning Commission's recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Chesak, second by Jaeger. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. That motion carries. All right, moving on to 9B, this is another consideration for variance request to expand a non-conformity, uh, side yard setback for a vertical addition at 703 Seventh Street North. James Kramback, take it away.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So, Courtney and Joseph Douglas have submitted a variance request to expand on a non-conformity to allow for the construction of a vertical addition to their house to add a bedroom. Uh, the foundation, uh, of the home is currently four feet 10 inches from the fence line. The TN1 District requires a five-foot minimum side yard setback. Uh, the fence line is not official, but in the absence of property pins can be reasonably used to establish the fact that the property is located, um, or the house is located on the property. As this is a vertical addition, staff is not requiring a survey of the property, but was requiring a variance in order to do the vertical addition. As proposed, the roof line is changing and a dormer is being added to the north side of the property. Those are depicted in the construction plans. Uh, the proposed materials and design are consistent with the surrounding structures and will not negatively impact the historic characteristics of the neighborhood. I will actually add a design element, uh, one of the design elements that we recently updated, um, in our zoning code. Uh, there are no economic considerations with this variance request. With that, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the variance request as proposed, and I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kramback. And this does not include any expansion to the north, it's just vertical.
Just vertical.
Okay. Just want to be clear. Anybody have questions for staff? If not, then we're just looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Looks like we have a motion by-
Second.
Second by Jaeger.
All right.
Third by Johnson.
Way off.
Yeah. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. All right. That is it for new business. Moving on to number 10, this is staff reports. Anything from Tony tonight? Chief Holmes?
Nothing, Dad, thank you.
Chief Davis?
Nothing yet.
Max Henen? Connie Hillman?
Yes, um, we received information from our local insurance agent about our workers' comp experience mod rate for 2026, and the preliminary estimate is that it will be .75. When we looked at our budget, we had our experience mod at .9, so this is a reduction of expenditures of about $54,000, or a .76% change to the levy of a decrease. So, I just thought I'd share that news.
Every bit counts. Thanks, Connie. Mr. Habegorst?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The Transit Consultant has concluded their recommendation, and we will be reviewing that with staff, and then I'll be sending it out, and we'll be having a formal presentation with TAC, and then to the city council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
James Kramback?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just, uh, a few items here. So, we do have a very busy EDA agenda coming up. Uh, a couple items to update the council on. Uh, one of the items, we'll be discussing provisions of a potential purchase and development agreement with the dermatology clinic that's interested in the industrial park property. Uh, secondly, the EDA will also be reviewing a childcare incentive policy, and that could potentially waive $450,000 in valuation of building permits, as well as zoning fees, but not waiving the SAC and WAC fees, um, like the Central Business District incentive policy. Uh, if recommended, this will come before city council for final approval.
Thank you, James. Mr. Langle?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Chris Schubert?
Nothing to add.
Eric Sharpton-Tier?
Nothing further.
Thank you. Administrator Broyles?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to give the council an update. Charter Commission did meet on August 20th. They asked for another meeting within 30 days, so approximately September 20th. Basically, they asked staff to provide some suggested language for three different areas of the charter. The first, which we talked about at length, was Chapter 5, Section 4. The second was some suggested language on potentially combining the sanitary sewer. And the third was kind of, while we're in there, is there anything else you want us to look at? And they had one. It was really semantics, the one brief comment in Chapter 2. So, our city attorney is, is gonna be drafting up some language. We're anticipating getting that this week, and then we will be getting another Charter Commission meeting scheduled, certainly within the 30-day window by September 28th, 29th.
Question, Nick. Did anybody on the commission want to bring back the posse commentatus for the mayor?
I sure hope so.
Has not been discussed, discussed, I'm guessing.
Senator, you still let the mayor raise a posse to go get the bad guys?
Oh, I believe there was-
That was not brought up.
I believe there was also a night-
I think that's a good rule.
Discussion of a night's watch, so I'd like to make sure that that, that discussion happens as well, please.
It also said you cannot race your horses through the city as well. So, it was a little old.
Only on the bridges.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Chief Stunek?
I have nothing.
Chesak?
Um, just maybe a question for Nick or any staff. Um, I under, I understand, I hope I'm correct, the Front Street Cafe is open again? Is that good news? Good news. They have been struggling and want to keep them, keep them busy there and going, so I'm glad to hear that. And, uh, once again, that Transit, um, dispatching system, um, I don't know if I can impress upon you guys enough, it's really good. So, it's, uh, something remarkable, because for instance, a bus driver told me he really likes it because he's busy all the time. So, what does that tell you?
Tells me he wasn't working before.
Yeah.
Well, our wages back.
All right, we're gonna go back to the mayor. I realize I, I almost skipped over the honorable Mayor Bedeau.
You know, I was gonna say nothing to report, but I am gonna report something. Actually, as a man who enjoys football, I just want to say congratulations to the Warrior Football Team on pulling off a fantastic victory, uh, the other night. I did notice something, though. Uh, no booms. It, it has been a tradition in our area that when we score a touchdown, there is, I don't care if there's actual fireworks, but I want to hear a boom, dang it. And when we win, I want to hear a lot of booms. So, uh, I just let there be a mayor's decree, and potentially we'll have to make a proclamation demanding the booms that let me know when the Warriors win a football game, but congratulations to them, a fantastic victory, and a sophomore quarterback. Something new in this area. End of report.
The money for the boom, to the fireworks.
Moving on to Mr. Beavins.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. As you heard from Nick, there's all kinds of stuff happening at the Charter Commission, and I just want to emphasize the importance of we've got four openings on the Charter Commission. And so, now's the time to jump on, cause when it rains, it pours, and we've got stuff happening, so we need you now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beavins. Mr. Jaeger?
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, just real quickly, a quick update on some happenings with the airport. Uh, myself, uh, Mr. Steve Barrows and Alderman Johnson met with the county today, and just to begin some conversation, uh, regarding the 50-50 split and, and what that looks like moving forward with, uh, county and, and Brainerd both being fairly represented, and citizens both being, uh, fairly levied for, uh, for maintaining our, our beautiful asset out there, the, the Brainerd Airport. So, um, we've got some work to do, uh, with some future, future discussions, but, uh, I will say that the, the basic tenor in the room was very open and, and healthy, and I think all, both parties are looking for, uh, a, a nice resolution moving forward, as well as potentially looking at rewriting some of the language and the ordinance that is vastly out of date and is, is our controlling, our current controlling document probably needs some touching up, and I think we're going to be, uh, taking a look at that. Perhaps Mr. Johnson wants to weigh in on that also as he was there, but, uh, I will just say, uh, good things happening, and, uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jaeger. Chairman Johnson?
Thank you. I'll, uh, do this for the mayor. He usually does, but it's the first day of school, everybody. Welcome back to school. Be safe getting to and from school. Drive safe around at the schools. Uh, yeah, to follow up on, uh, Alderman Jaeger's comments, it was a very productive meeting with the county today, and they are absolutely open to discussing the ordinance and moving forward and to making changes to it. We haven't identified exactly what that looks like, but we have identified that there's a willingness to talk about it and communicate, and that's, that's a big first step, so we're gonna continue working on that. And then I did the math on those change orders. The, uh, first one, the beach tree was an 8% increase, and the roundabout was an 18% increase by changing subcontractors. So, roads are getting more expensive by the minute. That's all I have.
Thank you. Chairman Johnson, Chairman Erickson?
Uh, thank you very much. Looking forward to the upcoming Planning Commission meeting. I'm told we have got, um, full agenda, um, and, uh, looking forward to that, and then my other committee, the Region 5, uh, Commission later in the month.
Thank you. I wanted to repeat the first day of school news for everybody. I, I think everybody noticed the traffic. If you were up today after a torrential downpour, if you were bringing kids to school or just trying to get to work, it's, it's noticeably different. Um, hopefully we can get some of those roads back open and get rid of some of these detours soon as possible. Um, but we'll have to deal with it for now. Uh, but it's good to see those kids get back in school, uh, especially for those parents that are home all the time. Uh, not myself, but my wife, maybe. Um, but I, it was the first time that I saw the Safe Routes to School project at Lowell, and I think it turned out great, so, and it was working great, too. So, um, good job, everyone, and we will see you two weeks. Looking for a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Motion by Stunek, second by Beavins. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. We are adjourned.